Okay, the time is 12:05 and I will call this work session of May 11th, 2023, of the MARTA Board of Directors to order. May I, first item on the agenda is the approval of the, sorry, today is the June 8th work session. May I have, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the May 11th, 2023 work session minutes. It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please vote. And the minutes have been adopted. Next item on the agenda is the Chair's Report. I have two items for each of you. First, later on in the full board meeting, we will meet our new colleague, Segura Jones. Segura is the City of Atlanta's new appointee and she was confirmed by counsel in the marathon meeting the other night. I think she achieved her confirmation somewhere around four in the morning and she will, she will be joining us for the board meeting. She couldn't make it for the work session. She's a Senior Advocacy and Engagement Manager at Propel and we will take a point of personal privilege during the board meeting to welcome her and give her the opportunity to introduce herself, but.
Chair, why do I get stuck over here between me and you?
Well.
Okay. I don't remember having a choice about this at all.
I, I know, I'm sure, I'm sure the gentleman is passionate about what he speaks. The second item on the agenda, and this will, this will be a briefing by Rhonda Allen and Richard Thomas during our full board meeting, but this is something that I'm really, really excited about personally. I hope all of you will be excited about it as well, but shortly after I was elected Chairman of this board, I was reached out to by Georgia Department of Natural Resources and I was very kind of curious as to why the, the DNR folks were reaching out to me, but this is something that I found very exciting and in line with our commitment to sustainability. But as we get these new CQ 400 rail cars delivered to us and we are taking older rail cars out of service, DNR has requested our older rail cars to be put in the water off the coast of Georgia for reefing habitats for wildlife off Georgia. So I hope you all are as excited about this as I am and we look forward to Rhonda and Richard's presentation during the board meeting. So with that, that concludes my report. I'll turn it over to Mr. Greenwood for the report of the GM and CEO.
Thank you, Chair Worthy. I just want to start by acknowledging the fact that we've had several public comments about labor negotiations, many of which from, you know, from our employees themselves. I want to remind everyone here that, you know, MARTA values our employees and their contributions and everything that they have to say, of course. We appreciate their concerns about wages and, and wage parity and working conditions. We also, however, recognize that we have entered into an agreement with Local 732 that we will conduct these negotiations in private and not in any forum outside of the bargaining process. And, you know, as such, we are, MARTA is not prepared to make comment to the media or in public in response to the comments that we hear from the employees. Suffice to say that we are as eager as they are to see this contract settled, get a new collective bargaining in, agreement in place that improves wages and allows MARTA to continue to provide the excellent service that we, we are charged to do. So I wanted to get that out there just to dispel any thought that we are, you know, we are not responsive or sympathetic to the, to the comments that we have been hearing and may continue to hear until this is resolved. The other item that I wanted to talk about is, is the employee retention report. Now, Luz Barrero is here. Luz is going to stand and deliver, as it were, in terms of where MARTA is in terms of our efforts to retain. Everyone's aware of the, the Herculean efforts we've taken to, to increase and recruit our workforce, but equally important is what we do once they get here. So without further ado, Luz.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Good afternoon, Chairman Worthy and members of the board. I am Luz Barrero, the Chief of Administration here at MARTA. And as the CEO just indicated, I am here to give you a brief report on the initiatives we are taking to bolster our employee retention. Next slide, please. So our employee retention had been, has been greatly impacted first by the pandemic and then by the full employment conditions, both nationwide and in our area. We recently conducted an employee satisfaction survey to learn about the reasons why some of our employees decide to stay with MARTA and some decide to leave. We wanted to hear it from them. And this is very much in line with the philosophy of our CEO, which has been, we, we, we hear you. When you tell us what you think, we hear you and we act in, in direct correspondence to that. So in addition to the strategies we already have been implementing to support employee retention, we wanted to hear from our employees through this satisfaction survey to fine-tune our employee retention strategies. Next slide, please. Our turnover rate in, from FY19 to present is depicted here and as you can see, MARTA's turnover rate jumped during the pandemic, consistent with the nationwide great resignation wave. The, the projected number here for FY23 takes into consideration all of the months up to the month of April. This 24% is above the average for agencies in, in the industry of our, of our size or similar size to MARTA. Next slide, please. The annual vacancy rate from FY19 to present is depicted here and as you can see, the efforts from the HR department and our recruitment team, particularly focusing on bringing onboard more bus operators and, and operations staff contributed to that decline in 2023. The, the recruitment efforts have been highly successful on, on that regard and we hope that they will continue doing so in, in the future. Next slide, please. As you can see here, different departments and different divisions have a different vacancy rate and some of them are, are more, more highly impacted than, than others. The capital program here is, is, is one of the departments with the highest vacancy rate, although Curry will probably tell you that lately, in the last few weeks, and that's not reflected in these, these numbers because they were as of the end of last month. But in the last few weeks, we have been highly successful in bringing additional people to curb our vacancy rate in, in the capital program. 13% as it, as it relates to vacancies is pretty much on the average as it relates to agencies of similar size as ours across the country. Next slide, please. So I, I began this conversation by letting you know that, that we were following Colly's philosophical direction. You, you speak, we listen, which is, we want to know what our employees say, what they're telling us, and then we want to act in, in a, in a correspondent manner. So we conducted this employee satisfaction survey to learn what motivates employees to, to leave or to stay at MARTA. This, this was a statistically valid survey. It was conducted in two phases. The first phase was conducting a series of one-to-one interviews with 46 employees, which allowed us to gain more in-depth insights. And then from those insights, we developed the survey. We, we sent out this, this survey. You can, you can see on the right-hand side here that people had options to, to respond to the survey and we had a really good response. 645 employees completed the surveys, forming a representative and statistically valid sample of our workforce. They were very much well distributed between represented and non-represented employees. Next slide, please. So you can see here on, on, on the left-hand side, we have listed the top three reasons that employees told us were reasons for them to, to stay at MARTA. And on the right-hand side are the, the top three reasons they gave to us for considering to leave MARTA. Every one of these tables presents two columns. One represents the views of the represented employees and the second one, the views of non-represented employees. So the top three reasons why our employees decide to stay at MARTA, for, for represented job security, pension plan, and health benefits. For non-represented, job security and stability, health benefits. And here is something really interesting and absolutely a great response, providing a public service, helping people, that, that sense of mission that keeps people here engaged. The reasons that employees gave us for considering to leave MARTA, for represented employees, top reason, compensation. Second reason, understaffed or stressed units. And third reason, poor communication. For non-represented employees, compensation as a, as an expected issue, understaffed and stressed also equally for represented and non-represented and poor communication is, there is a fairly consistent set of issues that impacts both represented and non-represented employees when making this, this decision to leave the organization. Next slide, please. So employees gave us a, a series of suggestions for how we could improve MARTA's retention. Six, six top suggestions are listed here in, in this table. One is to raise our pay to match industry standards. Their perception is that the, the current salaries are not keeping up with cost of living. The second one is related to management. They recommend that we do better at training our supervisors and our managers. The third one is related to technology and equipment. They, they are recommending that we keep up with new computers and, and tablets and laptops, which we have, we have a three-year refreshing schedule and we, on the last three years, we experienced some, some delays due to the supply chain issues. So that refreshing schedule has, has been, has been lapsing a little bit, but we are on target to, to do that by the end of this calendar year. We, they also told us about communication. They want us to improve the frequency of the, the communication, the, the quality and the timeliness of that communication coming, particularly coming from managers and supervisors. They suggest that we develop more of an ongoing approach to employee recognition, things such as Employee of the Month on a, on a department-by-department basis. And finally, training, more job-specific training. You, you all know, we have a very, very robust offering of training programs, both mandated and suggested. They are asking us to be more specific to the, to the, to the subject matters that impact every department. Next slide, please. So we are beginning to develop a series of strategies. Some of them are already ongoing, some of them are in the process of being developed, that respond to those suggestions and, and comments made by our employees. One of them is related to employee engagement. You know, we have put in place a, a series of ERGs, Employee Resource Groups. We have six of those in place and we are promoting them and facilitating the engagement of our employees in, in these, in these groups. They promote communication and, and information sharing. The second one related to compensation, the Department of HR budgeted for FY24 to implement a compensation study. We are ready to, to do that. We haven't done that for 10 years and so this will give us the information we need in order to make appropriate adjustments in that area. Benefits, a low-cost healthcare option is being added to our health plan to expand affordability for, for all employees. Promoting wellness, we, we've been very actively engaged with our health insurance and benefits providers to promote health first here at the workplace. We, we have done free yoga classes, mammogram screenings, diabetes prevention classes, bootcamps, and we will continue to do that and, and make those even more robust in the years to come. On the communication side, we received quite a bit of feedback about the fact that employees want better communication. So we, we've, we've done, the CEO conducted a series of town hall meetings and fire chats, but now we are bringing additional elements to these communications, particularly those coming from the executive management team. We are in the process of finalizing the design for an EMT communication that is going to come to all employees on a, on a regular basis. On the recognition and appreciation side, in addition to our annual employee recognition ceremony, we are also celebrating anniversaries and milestones and we are promoting the monthly employee recognition across the board. Regarding development and training, as you know, we offer this in-person training and online training programs. We have a, a strong series of mandatory trainings, trainings such as SMS and so forth that everybody has to do, but now we are wanting to customize this training to more precisely address the, the suggestions of our employees. And finally, on the flexi-work schedules, we are conducting a pilot program right now to determine the number of, if, if we could possibly expand the number of days people can work from home, so, so that if, if in fact this pilot is successful, we might consider a change to the current policy. That's still a TBD process as, as it is ongoing. Next slide, please. Regarding the ERGs I mentioned before and you, and you have heard here, some reports of these ERGs, the MARTA Young Professionals Group is one that has presented before the board some of the successful engagements they have had, both internally as well as with the community. They have about 134 participants. We have a Black Excellence at MARTA group, has 181 participants dedicated to the advancement of excellence, Black Excellence at MARTA. We have an Empowering Women at MARTA group ERG that some of you have actually spoken at. It has focused on health and health initiatives that support women and it also helps with, with women career development here at MARTA. And finally, the most recent one is the Veterans Group, the MARTA Veteran Professionals, so MVPs group is, is the new one. Forty participants so far dedicated to supporting employees who have served in the military as well as their families. Next slide, please. So one of the, the newest initiatives that we're working on is, is under development is what we call the First 120 Days Employee Engagement Plan. The initiative is designed to ensure that during those first 120 days, people have, employees, new employees have the kind of attention, dedication, and one-to-one engagement that is needed to retain them. Because we have found that a number of our employees leave at or before finishing that first 120 days. So a first element of that initiative is to design a card or an electronic message from all managers welcoming these new employees. We intend to put in place a mentoring support program for every single employee where they are handheld during that period of time. Somebody who's more experienced can help them acclimate to MARTA's culture into their new role. We have designed a series of touchpoints where managers or supervisors will have a touchpoint with every single employees at the 30-day mark, the 60-day mark, the 90-day mark, and the 120-day mark. This will allow us to be much more proactive regarding what can be enhanced and what can be provided to employees during that period of time, so that they in fact make a longstanding commitment to MARTA. On the health and wellness side, we are enhancing and promoting employees' participation on the health exams, such, such as the biometric exams, the health assessment programs, mammograms, et cetera. We find that, that that is a, a great support for, particularly for new employees. And, and finally, we are promoting and supporting the engagement of all new employees in career development courses, not just those that are offered by learning and development, but also opportunities for external training. Next slide, please. So as it relates to mandatory courses as well as elective training programs, we are putting a lot more, more emphasis on, to that through this program. As I mentioned before, we, we have a very robust set of mandatory classes that everyone has to go through. You, you have a list here. Of course, safety being such a critical aspect of all of our training, this is at the top of the list. But then, once you pass those critical SMS, first choice and conflict resolution kind of trainings, you turn more into the personal development and professional development type of classes, which we believe are very critical to assist employees with their professional development. Next slide, please. So here is an example, a detailed example of what this 120-day employee engagement plan would look like for a bus operator. So they, they begin with their first two days of NERO, the, the New Employee Training and Orientation Program. During the, the first couple of weeks, they complete the CDL permit training for those that do not have it. Weeks three to five, they attend the, the Georgia Piedmont Technical College Program. Week five, the first touchpoint begins with their manager and supervisors to determine if any additional remedial education is required for this operator from, there is, we typically have a ceremony for the graduation of all bus operators. This, this has been a sort of a landmark for us. We suspended it during, during the pandemic, but now it is in place. They have an opportunity to know each other, relate to each other, but also get to know better their managers and supervisors. And week 14, the newly hired employees pair with a mentor. This is the person that's going to help them, you know, handhold them until they complete this 128, 20-days engagement. So this is just a quick view of how this will look like for an operator. We have one for mechanics, flaggers, et cetera. So just, just an example. Next slide, please. And these are our, our next step in, in this, next steps in this process. We are establishing a task force that is going to be charged with the implementation of all the recommendations that came out of the survey. We of course have a commitment to share the results of the survey with all of our employees so that they in fact know that they told us and we listened and that we are acting on those recommendations. We are also ensuring that the, the task force maintains a regular communication with all employees to tell them about how the implementation of the plan is coming along. We will continue to promote employee engagement with the ERGs and we will implement our compensation study and, and share those, the results of the study with, with our employees. We will continue to offer a very robust set, set of health and wellness initiatives, including not just here at the headquarters, but at the, at the yards and, and at the bus depots. And we will conduct so that we can gauge the progress in employee retention. And finally, we will implement this first 120-days employee engagement plan. And that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrero. Any questions? Mr. Duratt?
Thank you very much for this presentation, Luz. I've never had a mentor, as I have changed jobs, which I've done a lot. And so I think it's important that, that we do a very thoughtful job of matching new employees with mentors and I'm hoping that we'll have in place a program where we're screening to find the best fit and not just a supervisor in a department. And I also hope that we're going to have a program where potential mentors are taught how to be an effective mentor. So other than that, I think it's fantastic and I applaud us for doing this for our employees.
Thank you. Excellent suggestions.
Ms. Williamson?
Thank you, Luz. I thought that was a very in-depth.
I thought that was a very in-depth presentation that you made. A couple of things. First, I'll start with a comment. The flex work schedules, I think you're spot on related to that. We're seeing that more and more with our employers and hearing from them that their employees need work or quality life balance, work-life balance. So I think that's really important in terms of giving people that flexibility, especially if you've got the technology at home, that you can still be very productive. A couple of things, and I'll go back to the comment that Mr. Duratt made about training the supervisor, if you will. Are you going to require all supervisors and managers, upper management, to go through any professional development training so that they are equipped and able to supervise and manage at the level that they need their employees to be productive?
Yeah, yes, and thank you. That was one of the issues that employees highlighted in their response to the survey, that they wanted us to make sure that their managers and supervisors had a better training before they became managers. And so we are working with our training, learning and development director to figure out how we can structure that so that, in fact, we are responsive to that request. So, yes.
Okay. And then my last question is related to the CDL training. Are you doing that in-house? Are you conducting CDL training here in-house? Or are you partnering with area technical colleges to do the CDL training?
So we have a partnership established with Georgia Piedmont Technical College, and they help us with with that training as we stand currently.
Thank you.
Mr. Zagabe?
Thank you for the presentation. I agree, this is really great. A moment that struck me was when you said you did 46 one-on-one interviews before you created a survey. I know most PhDs who create surveys, they don't do that much rigor before, so kudos to you and team.
The kudos are due to Rob Goodwin and Research and Analysis and his team who designed this entire thing. Dr. Goodwin and Dr. Salter, who worked for him, are very rigorous in their approach. So they deserve the, they deserve the kudos. Thank you.
Great work, doctor. If that makes sense. The one comment I just had that would be helpful for us, like, it looks like a ton of investment is going into employee experience, and I think as a board, it would be really great, I don't know if we're tracking like net promoter score from our employees, I see that we do an engagement survey, but just the ability to see something like a net promoter score or whatever our engagement score is over time, because I get the impression that you're probably going to still have the same feedback a year from now around the areas that people are concerned about, but it would be really good to see if like the net promoter score, some type of sentiment is going up so we can say, hey, we are seeing the impact of these, all the work that you're doing.
Yeah, we can absolutely figure out a way to create a dashboard to measure that. So, yeah, thank you for the suggestion.
Mr. Pond?
Luz, thanks. Very comprehensive report. Just to comment, the challenge is going to be, you've got a long list of things to do is to consistently and continually get this done and certainly place emphasis on the higher priority items. But I have two questions. Number one, have you tracked the turnover rate with this agency versus other similar transit agencies? I'm curious how that percentage of turnover stacks up against others, similar-sized agencies. And my second question is, is do we share ideas with other agencies sometimes?
So the first question, yes, we do compare our turnover rate to other agencies of similar size. We were slightly higher than agencies of our size across the country, although we are now beginning to catch up now that our recruitment efforts have gained some more significant momentum. And regarding agency sharing, we do participate in APTAS, different seminars and programs, and share information with them. APTA, as a matter of fact, conducted formal surveys on these subjects, and we participate in that process. And by doing that, we also benefit from their results and analysis.
Ms. Hordage?
Again, let me echo what a great job you guys did on this. And Mr. Pond asked one of my questions. The other one is just a point, it's not a question, but as we get this going and as we start to look at this whole process, I think employees that do their job and do it correctly sometimes feel like they're not really recognized or rewarded for what they did. And I see that and hear that in lots of different agencies that we, so if we could take it a step further, once we get past this, and look at ways to recognize them for, you know, attendance and, you know, whatever it is that they do, I know each each area would probably have different parameters for that, and then do it quarterly or twice a year or whatever it is where we have a recognition to say thank you for those that are doing their job and doing it the way we need them to do it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mayor Floyd?
Yeah, thanks, Luz. A telling comment to me is something to point several people who mention select and/or train managers so they understand work and know how to supervise people. I think that's a, that's an overall telling component of retention and what people think about why they stay is, but anyway. And my question is concerned about comparing to other transit agencies. Do we compare with other around the world, or is it just in this country?
No, we also do comparisons that go beyond the United States. As a matter of fact, we just recently joined an international organization that precisely allows us to do this type of comparison. So we try to be far more expansive than limiting our comparisons to the United States.
Okay, I think my only comment about that would be, I think that's important to do. Of course, it's important to understand the differences there between how they are, how they work and their situations, if you will, about how we do things, but I think it's, I think that's something this board would enjoy looking at, is how we relate, not just to other agencies around this country, but around the world and what they're doing.
Yeah, we might think in the future, bringing to you information in that regard, once our participation in this sort of international consortium is a little bit more mature and we have data to share, we will certainly be delighted to share that with you.
I think that's a first step in trying to relate to the fact that we need to think a little bit more about how our transit operates with regard to the people in the world rather than just in this country, so.
Just to add to what Luz is saying, it's the COMET is the name of the group, the Community of Metros, and they're largely European and Asia-Pacific, some of the larger operators, and so they do an annual report. And now that we've joined, you know, there's a fair bit of lifting for us to contribute our stats to them, but once that's done, we will get that back and see where we land in several different categories, including things like retention and recruitment. And then we will, of course, share that with the board.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Barrero?
If you're a Ms., I'd like to recognize Chris Wyczakovsky, who's also a PhD, who worked on, he actually was doing these interviews, so I really, and he's in customer experience, so three PhDs.
I've got one last question.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Williamson?
We just happen to have a very highly educated group of people here.
One last question for you, Luz. In terms of getting employees over the 120 days, after they get over that 120 days, which are the most critical, it sounds like, what's the retention rate after that? Is there, has there been any analysis related to that?
So we did not break the retention data into first 120 and after that, but we did notice that we had a preponderance of people leaving then. I could easily get the data and bring it back to you.
No, I'd just be curious. It's just for, you know, my own curiosity to know what the data would look like after the first 120 days.
Yeah, we will be happy to provide you with that information.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Barrero? Thank you so much for that informative presentation. Before I turn it back over to Colleen, since the work session isn't as strict on Robert's Rules of Order as the regular board meeting, I wanted to welcome our newest colleague, Segura Jones. Ms. Jones, welcome with open arms. I gave the board some brief introductory remarks when we came to order, but we're glad you're here, and we're sorry that you have to sit next to Mr. Floyd. That's the part of the, that's part of the freshman hazing. But would love to turn it over to you if you have any comments, but we're very excited to have your perspective on alternative modes of transit on this board. So if you want to say anything, I'm happy to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Happy to be here. I'm here to listen today and gather information. As a resident and a community advocate, have always wanted to be in a city with a solvent transportation agency that provides great service to opportunities, so looking forward to seeing how other aspects of sustainable transportation can work with with transit and get us to that goal.
Well, thank you and welcome again. Mr. Greenwood, do you want to finish the CEO and GM report?
Thank you, Chair Worthy. Just some upcoming events and meetings of significance, so we've been waiting for this moment for quite some time, and on Thursday, June 15th, we will have the Summerhill Bus Rapid Transit Groundbreaking. That'll happen on, at Summerhill A-Lot at Hank Aaron Drive in Georgia Avenue, Thursday, June 15th, 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., come one, come all. I also want to point out that the MAC Committee Meeting will happen on Tuesday, July 11th, virtually. And also in terms of APTA, we'll have the APTA Transit Board Members Seminar in person in Birmingham on July 15th, and then finally, the APTA Transform Conference, which is happening in Orlando on Sunday, October the 8th until October the 11th. And with that, Chair Worthy, I'll return the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. At this time, I believe that we have two topics for executive session, so I will entertain a motion that the board enters executive session for the purposes of real estate and litigation.
I'll make that motion.
The motion has been moved and seconded. This will be a vote by hand, not by electronic system. Please raise your hand. Okay, we'll go into executive session. We'll all, all, please leave the room. Okay, we'll go into executive session. We'll all, all please leave the room.
Ladies and gentlemen, the time is 1:35. I'm going to call the June 8, 2023 MARTA Board of Directors meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is approval of two sets of minutes that are in your packet. It is the May 9, 2023 special called board meeting where we had the budget briefing in Justice Sears Law Firm, and then the May 11, 2023 board meeting. Both of those minutes are in your packet. And if there are no edits or discussions, I will entertain a motion in a second. It has been moved and seconded. Please vote. The minutes have been adopted. Next item on the agenda are public comments. A reminder that to each member of the public that is here today, that public comments are limited to two minutes per individual. And we have four public comments today. The first, the first public comment is Mercedes Gale. Ms. Gale?
Hey, how y'all doing this morning, or this afternoon? I basically wanted to state a comment due to the fact that I ride the Flint River to Flint River in the Justice Center in the morning and at night just for me to commute to the Atlanta-Hartsville-Jackson Airport. I just wanted to make a few requests, how that particular route is an hour-by-hour bus route, while the, while the other bus routes gets like every 30 minutes on the route, coming and going. I also want to state the fact that with the 191 in the Flint River, the Justice Center, on the PM shift, you have certain bus drivers who want to basically say what stops they're going to and what they're not going to do and how they're not going to take somebody home to, you know, off of the Flint River and Thomas and the Justice Center route. And also how, you know, you have certain homeless people who, who they allow people like on the bus or whatever, and they basically, you know, they, I guess, waste on themselves on this actual particular bus route. And I think some changes need to be done about that. And as far as with the Flint River and Thomas Road, I believe there should be more bus rides on Thomas Road that's in Jonesboro, and that's really about it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gale. Next public comment will be from Ms. Jennifer Benson.
Good morning, or good afternoon, excuse me.
Good afternoon. I haven't done this before, so I have to read from here. But I'm an old Fourth Ward resident who lives on Auburn Avenue in the historic MLK District. As you might guess, my public comment relates to the proposed streetcar extension east project. As a part of today's meeting, I believe you'll be voting on the fiscal '24 MARTA budget. Within this budget, there is a $12 million estimate related to the continued design of the streetcar extension project, $12 million. I am not here to tell you that you shouldn't approve the budget or that specific line item, but I am here to say that I hope that MARTA and the taxpayers should attempt to get their money's worth for that $12 million. You've heard from a number of individuals and businesses over the last several months that there are significant concerns about this project as it is currently designed. I certainly hope that as a part of this final design, there are alternatives that are considered, that the intent is not just to plow forward with what has been sketched out over the last several years. Many of us hope that you are considering more technologically advanced alternatives to the streetcar, such as individual light transit, like autonomous mobility, or on-demand shuttles. These are less expensive and require much less infrastructure than the streetcar. I also hope that you are considering alternative paths that do not cut through historic neighborhoods to get to the Belt Line. Finally, I do hope that this $12 million expenditure for design is something, results in something that we Atlannans can be proud of, that is worthy of being used on the Belt Line, which many of us consider to be one of the most prized components of our city. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Benson. Next public comment. Next public comment will be from Anne Marie Keitzman. Please correct me if I got that last name wrong.
Thank you. It's Keitzman.
Keitzman. Welcome, Ms. Keitzman. Good afternoon.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to have some comments today. And similar to what Jennifer just shared, I am asking the count, the board to please consider pausing on the Streetcar Extension, including the twelve million dollars set aside for the design phase, primarily for these reasons, the construction, the infrastructure, the impact of that on the historic neighborhood of Suite Auburn. Eminent domain has not been ruled out, I believe, on areas where space constraints and accommodations cannot be made for the streetcar lanes. It will destroy hundreds of mature trees and green space along the Belt Line, forever changing what is so special to us and a unique draw to visitors all from the world. The estimated costs as of today are between two hundred and thirty and two hundred and sixty million dollars, and we still have no ridership data to support those costs. And more than thirty projects around Atlanta have been shelved or postponed indefinitely to accommodate the astronomical costs associated with that particular project. And the more MARTA tax around Atlanta, or the more MARTA tax passed in sixteen was intended to prioritize projects that included federal grants to share costs with taxpayers, and this project is not eligible for federal funding. So, as Jennifer said, please consider alternatives that are more financially viable, less destructive, and will help preserve this amazing park, and those include a separated lane for wheeled vehicles to enhance safety for pedestrians and allow speedier alternatives for bikers, scooters, and skateboards. A lit lane would increase safety, provide major transportation benefits, and help preserve the Belt Line as a beautiful park as it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keitzman. And the last public comment will be from Glenn Hall. Good afternoon, Mr. Hall. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. One of the things I wanna say, I just wanna find out what MARTA wants to be for the future. The comments we just heard, I understand you have some obstacles you have to deal with. But what do we really wanna be? I've been in transportation for thirty years. I worked for SEPTA for nine years in Philadelphia. I understand that MARTA tries to pattern themselves sometimes after SEPTA. You have a long way to go. You have too many obstacles here. I'm just wondering what you want to do, where, what's the next step for MARTA? Because it seems to be very stagnated. It seems to be this, I've been here eighteen years. It hasn't progressed at all. It's went downhill. I don't understand what, what the goal is here, because this is a major hub. Transportation has to get better. It has to. Now, I, like I said, I understand the obstacles that you are up against. It's from your own residence. So, there's got to be a way that you can, we can change the dynamic of this thing. Because if you don't have progression, you're going nowhere. It seems to be going backwards to me instead of forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Andrews, were there any public comments via voicemail or email?
Yes, we received one email from Dr. Ed Williams at eleven-ten last night, and it's rather lengthy. It'll be attached verbatim to the minutes of this meeting for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Next item on the agenda is approval of a resolution to adopt fiscal twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-four operation and capital budgets. We'll turn it over to our CFO, Raj. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Worthy, Mr. Greenwood, and members of the board. In my presentation today, I'm gonna discuss the following three things. First, the steps we have taken, the meetings we have had, and the briefings we have provided with respect to the proposed twenty-four operating and capital budget. Two, I'm gonna provide a brief summary of the overall operating and capital budget. And last but not the least, provide some updates on the more MARTA sources and uses of funds. Next slide, please. Here is a summary of the timeline. We provided a full briefing in detail on the assumptions on the fiscal year twenty-four proposed budget on May ninth to the board, and we held public hearings on May sixteenth and May eighteenth. And we provided the full budget, it's also on our website, to all of the jurisdictions. And for the second time, in detail, the full budget was presented to the Business Management Committee on May twenty-fifth, which included the feedback or the comments we got from our public hearings. And we're here now, June eighth. Next slide, please. Here is a brief summary of the overall budget. Before I go through some of the numbers, I just wanna note that the top-line numbers have not changed since we presented the, for the first time on May ninth, and subsequently the public hearings and the May twenty-fifth Business Management Committee. In other words, the top-line numbers are the same. And kind of to reiterate that, the total revenues are assumed to be six hundred and thirty-two point four for operations. And the total gross expenses, that is including some of the capital allocations, are budgeted at seven hundred and twelve point four million. And the capital allocation is assumed to be at eighty-one million. That gives us a net expense budget of, for operations of six hundred and thirty-one point four million. On the proposed fiscal year twenty-four capital budget, the total sources, which is all of the four mentioned below, that add up to a billion, hundred and fifty-eight million point three. And the total uses are budgeted at eight hundred and fifty-four point five million. Again, these are the same numbers. They have not changed since May ninth. Next slide, please. A full briefing on this slide was presented at the Business Management Committee, but I wanna highlight a couple of changes we have made since then. Again, just to reiterate, none of the top-line numbers have changed, but this is based on discussions with the city and some of the, two of the city board members. I wanna draw your attention to the middle of the chart or the slide here. There are two boxes or two tables on that. The first table is the twenty-three budget. That does not change. It's the same as you have seen a couple of weeks ago. And the table on the right, in the previous iteration, we had budgeted enhanced bus service at twenty-two point two million. However, based on further discussions and looking at what we are experiencing at the present time, we believe the actual expenses will be approximately ten million dollars. So that's why you see the first line, enhanced bus service at ten. However, we cannot make any major changes to the service before we go through what's called a Title VI equity analysis. Also, there is a bus network redesign that's in the works, so we're gonna do both at around the same time. So pending that, we have put the twelve point two million in a contingency with the city of Atlanta. Likely, it won't be used. If it's not used, it'll go back to whatever they choose to use it on, maybe for capital expansion, if that's what is decided. So that's a change. Again, overall numbers have not changed, so there is a subtle difference in that. The next change we have made, at the bottom of the slide, the last, the bottommost chart on that, or table on that, we had a footnote for fiscal year twenty-two enhanced bus service actual expenses. Two weeks ago, that the NTD report had not been accepted at that point, so we had footnoted the numbers will likely change or may change, subject to the acceptance of our information by NTD, which they have. Last week, they sent us a letter saying that they have accepted that. So fiscal year twenty-two expenses are now six million dollars. Just full disclosure, a couple of weeks ago, we had said it could be about eight, pending the finalization. It's been finalized, so six is the actual number. Next slide, please. And with that, I respectfully request the approval of the resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty-four operating and capital budget. Next slide. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Raj. Any questions from the board? Mr. Dur, oh, yeah. Let's, let's move and second it. Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Thank you very much. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a report from the Business Management Committee Chairman Duritt.
Mr. Chairman, the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, May the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, and approved the following resolutions. A. Resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for procurement of IBM Storage Insights Pro License, RFPPP P four nine one three three. B. Resolution authorizing the award of a single-source contract for digital signage data enhancement, RFPPP P five zero two three two. I request approval of these resolutions.
Chairman Duritt has moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please vote. The resolutions are adopted.
The committee also received the following briefings. Briefing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-four operating and capital budgets, and D. Record-keeping services for non-represented four oh one A defined contribution plan and MARTA employee four fifty-seven B deferred compensation plans, RFPPP five zero three four eight. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Duritt. Next, we'll hear from the Planning and Capital Programs Committee Chair Powers.
Mr. Chairman, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, May twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-three, and approved the following resolutions. A. Resolution authorizing the award of contract for the procurement of architectural and engineering final design services for the Bankhead Station Expansion, REI AE five zero two nine two. B. Resolution authorizing the award for a contract for professional services for the Clayton County South Lake BRT Study, LOA L five zero three three nine. C. Resolution to approve the locally preferred alternative for the Canler Road ART project. I request approval of these resolutions.
Chair Powers has moved approval of these resolutions. Is there a second? Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please vote. The resolutions have been adopted.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Powers. Next, the Operations and Safety Committee Chair Pond.
Mr. Chairman, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, and approved the following resolutions. A. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of ultrasonic testing for Marla Rail Systems, FBB five zero one oh two. B. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of commercial doors and installation, RFPPP five zero two zero two, utilizing the federal GSA program. C. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of bus fasteners, IFBB five zero two oh seven. I request approval of these resolutions.
Chair Pond has moved approval. Is there a second? Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please vote. Can the record please reflect that Mayor Floyd is in favor of these resolutions? Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
My screen for the prior motion and also this one does not show up for a vote, but I vote affirmatively for both this action.
Try pressing F five.
Right.
No, try pressing F five.
Nad came up.
All right.
The committee also received the following briefing, MARTA Full Service Exercise Results. Oh, excuse me?
Oh, the resolutions passed. Mr. Pond?
You're slow.
I think I just heard Mr. Pond say it concluded his report. We'll move on. External Relations Committee Chair Idd.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, the External Relations Committee met on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, and received the following briefings. A. The fiscal year twenty-three third quarter advertising and sales revenue briefing, and B. Results of the public hearings on fiscal year twenty twenty-four operating and capital budget. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Idd. The last Audit Committee Chair Hordage.
Mr. Chairman, the Audit Committee met on Thursday, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and received the following briefings. Internal Audit Activity, MARTA Fiscal Year Twenty-three External Audit Engagement. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Hordage. Next item on the agenda is approval of a resolution authorizing a award of a contract, IFBB five zero three four six, dismantling of CQ three twelve rail cars for reefing services. Ms. Allen and Mr. Thomas.
Good afternoon, board. I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Worthy stated during the work session, and that this was a, this is an initiative that came to us earlier this spring as a result of a request from the Department of Natural Resources to look into how we might use some of our retired cars as artificial reefs. There is a bit of a crunch in time in, in the sense that there is a restriction on when the work can be done.
For those of you inquiring as to why, that is because of the right whale mating season.
Yes, yes. So, Mr. Thomas, our Director of Sustainability, will get into a little bit more of that in his presentation, but I just wanted to, to be clear as to why we're coming here directly to the board, rather than having, you having seen this in a committee before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy, for establishing that. Good afternoon, Chairman Worthy, Mr. Greenwood, and other members of the Board of Directors. I am Richard Thomas, MARTA's Director of Sustainability. I am here to present a resolution to award a contract for the dismantling of CQ three twelve rail cars for reefing services, IFBB five oh three four six. Next slide, please. I would share some introductory information before moving to specifics regarding the contract procurement and request approval to award the contract. Next slide, please. Natural habitats for marine life have been destroyed due to dredging for coast and inland development, overfishing, storms, and even mild changes in climate. Artificial reefs are created to provide a stable growing area for corals and algae, as well as a habitat for fish and all other organisms that you would normally find in a natural reef. Rail cars have been proven to be fully functional as artificial habitats, offering support to smaller marine life. In two thousand and one, the state, the New York City Metropolitan Transit Authority, MTA, offered thirteen hundred obsolete subway car shells to state conservation programs as artificial reef materials. The pictures on the slide demonstrate this activity. Here you can see the car being, the cars being transported on a barge to the ocean, and cars being dropped into the ocean. On the bottom left, the car is on the ocean floor, and after three months of being in the water, divers found algae and other invertebrates growing, in addition to marine life inhabiting the car. The bottom right picture shows a diverse array of fish from the interior of the submerged car shell. In support of the restoration of coral ecosystems off the Georgia coast, MARTA has identified eight rail cars that will be suitable for use as vessels for artificial reef material. Next slide, please. There was an extensive collaboration among the Office of Sustainability, the Office of Rail Car Maintenance, and the Office of Safety and Quality Assurance. We have also been working with the Georgia Department of Natural Resources in preparation for this opportunity. Each area deserves an immense amount of credit for helping us get this far. The scope is broken up into base work and optional work. The contract is to dismantle and clean the cars, harvest equipment for MARTA's use for spare parts, transport and barge rail car shells for reefing materials off the Georgia coast. The base scope is specifically for two cars that would, that is planned for reefing this. The base scope is specifically for two cars that would, that is planned for reefing this summer. Reefing is performed between mid-April and early November to avoid contact with the North Atlanta right whale and other endangered species, as Mr. Worthy said. We will have two cars ready for reefing before the seasons end. We plan to ship the first two cars to the coast via freight rail. The Department of Natural Resources will be responsible for barging the first two cars. Transport and barging of any additional cars may be performed differently. Therefore, option work is added for any additional cars that may be reefed. These cars could possibly be transported via roadway and barged at MARTA's expense. Next slide, please. MARTA posted the invitation for bids on May 3rd. Notice was sent to 20 vendors, and the solicitation was advertised in the AJC, Georgia Procurement Registry, and the Georgia Local Government Assets Marketplace, and MARTA's website. Nineteen firms received the documents. A pre-bid conference was held on May 10th. Two bids were received prior to the bid deadline. The bids were from Diversified Service Partners LLC and Kinky Shario International LLC. The contract term is for two years, with a DBE goal of 17%. The bid submitted by Diversified Partner Service LLC was determined to be the lowest responsive bid. However, the bidder did not substantiate the five-year of experience performing this service. The second lowest bid submitted by Kinky Shario International LLC is a responsive bid, and the bidder is determined to be capable of performing the contract. Next slide, please. I respectfully request authorization to award contract IFBB50346, dismantling of CQ 312 railcars for reefing services to Kinky Shario International LLC in the amount of $2,107,500. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Um, any questions of Mr. Thomas from the Board? Oh, well, let's first entertain a motion and a second. Mr. Duratt is our Roberts Rules of Order Police over here, so. Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Sagabe.
First off, thank you for the presentation. This is, this is great, and I'm super excited. I just have a pretty basic question. If we didn't do this with the railcars, what do we do with the railcars that we're retiring?
Well, I would defer that question to railcar maintenance, which I don't see. So, I'll, I can get that information for you and respond at a later date.
Yeah, generally, okay, we've got some responses. Go ahead.
A couple.
A couple.
At, at times they are. We have a, a contract now where the, the cars are salvaged. They're sent to, I believe it's in New Jersey, where they're stripped and they're salvaged. But as a, as a result or a thought process of what are we going to do with the, the remaining cars when we, as we're getting new cars on, this is one opportunity that we can explore, that we are exploring, and could possibly expand. And other, Raj, are there other cases that we, that we have in?
That's what I was going to say.
Okay.
Mayor Floyd.
Well, I don't understand. What does it cost us to get rid of these cars without this program?
So, we don't have that. The people in the room do not have that information. If you're asking, what does it cost for the salvage per car compared to what it costs for reefing?
Yeah, let's assume this, this opportunity didn't come up. What would, what would MARTA have spent to get rid of these cars?
You have it? Yeah, I don't know.
Jackie Holland, can you come over for a second? Anything, any obsolete equipment or, um, anything we have, usually they're disposed of at scrap value because these do not typically have what's called an aftermarket value. We cannot sell them to the other railroads and all that. So, they're sorted scrap value. It again depends. Sometimes we have had to pay on, in some occasions, and that's why I asked Jackie Holland to come here. She's in charge of the materials and procurement, and she does report up to me. And typically, we have to pay for either transporting them. And in my experience overall, the salvage value usually kind of, you know, brings in enough money for transportation and all that, so we do not make any money out of that. It's pretty much a no-loss-and-no-gain situation in most of the cases. In some cases, we may have to pay for folks to remove the junk and the salvage equipment from our yards. Anything you want to add to that?
No, Raj has said, we do auction yearly. And even on a monthly basis, our materials and equipment that we salvage, we do an auction. But as Raj has mentioned, in many cases, we have to pay for folks to pick those items up.
So, there is some expense related to doing it. But we don't know how that would compare with what we're being asked to pay here, right?
We didn't have time to get that kind of information for you.
All right, and I'm, I'm okay. My other question is, they're just taking these cars on a ra, on a truck and dumping them in the ocean, right? I mean, why, why do we have a five-year experience requirement for that?
So, part of the, the experience is actually working inside of our, on our property in our rail, in our rail yard, or in our facility to dismantle, and to safely dismantle the cars. Some of the cars, and just depending on what, what version they are, they could have material in them that needs specialty, special care in cleaning and getting all of the solvents and grease and everything off. So, there's an environmental aspect to that. There's also the responsibility to load and unload the equipment off of our, our, our track on 2A, whether it's a truck or whether it's a freight rail, rail system that requires the use of cranes, and so safely understanding and how to load and unload is also part of that experience, that level of experience that we need.
So, all this will be done by contractor on our property?
Yes, in this case it is. Yes, yes. So, in the future, and that's also part of why we have this kind of long, you know, this is more of a prep and a pilot on how this might be done. There may be lessons that we learn in this instance that will help us to maybe make better adjustments in the future if this is something that we decide to expand upon.
And how many cars are we doing?
So, we have, the first, we're, we're looking to reef two cars this summer. In this particular contract, though, we have identified up to eight, so there could be up to six more that we do in perhaps the next year. So, that's why this is a two-year contract. So, we're going to look and see exactly how this goes, what's available to us, and then if the opportunity exists and we think this is a great option, then we'll continue to move forward. So, right now, we're only looking for the base, uh, the, the base scope of two cars right away.
So, $2 million for two cars or $2 million for eight cars?
For eight cars.
Eight cars. So, that's $500,000. Am I math that right there?
And, yes, and this is broken up into different scopes. So, there's dismantling the car, which is where part of that, that is. Then there's, where's, uh, transport? So, where are you actually sending the car to? In this case, we know we're going off the coast of Savannah. If there's something that we want to do in a different place later, we need to be able to have that ability to, to pay for the transportation if we're going somewhere different than off the coast of Georgia where we're going now. Today, or with these two cars, we're working with the Department of Natural Resources. They're sharing the cost of the barging in this instance. If we decide to do this with other cars, we may, MARTA may be responsible for that cost of barging. And so, all of those things are what are, are left over in that, those options, and what we're looking to seek your approval for to encompass this, so.
Okay, and our chairman's buddy at the DNR is the one that brought this to us. How much are they contributing of this $2 million?
Uh, I, that's a, that's a very good question, Mayor Floyd. I, I don't know the answer to that. What I do know is, and I, I don't, I don't want to speak for Ms. Allen, but what I do know is they are partnering with us and shouldering the cost with us, the extent to which I'm not sure, but I'm sure we can get that information. But they are doing that for us as a state agency to MARTA. I think that, for example, MTA in New York had to foot the whole bill to get their cars down here to Georgia. So, there is skin in the game from the state government.
Okay, and you, and I'm, I'm being a little humorous about this. I understand that, or lackadaisical, but, because I am in favor of this, but I, I'm unsure now about the whale thing and why. What, what is the rush here to do this now? I don't understand. That's what I.
That is, that is a federal oceanic NOAA rule because the right whale mates off of Georgia, and apparently during mating season, they don't want them running into train cars that weren't there.
When, when is the first car, when will these cars go out?
I'm sorry. So, we, if, according to our, our schedule, we'd like to begin to work on the cars and dismantling them this, later this month. So, sometime between July and August is when we're hoping to actually have them cleaned, stripped. But we also need, we recognize that there are holidays that are, that are in, in between this time, so the contractor may not be available to work on them at that time. There's also, since we're working in our railyards and in our facility, we also have to make sure that we have enough room to actually have cars prepped for the special events that are, that are upcoming with July 4th and the Labor Day weekend with Dragon Con. So, there'll be, there may be opportunity where we have to have, or not opportunity, but restrictions where we can't work during certain times. So, it'll be later this summer, probably in August, before we can say that we're really ready to then ship the cars down to the Georgia coast. And then you'll see the, you know, we'll make plans for the actual reefing.
So, the vote today to approve this $2 million is so that we don't have to wait 30 days and vote on it?
Exactly.
And then not have enough time to miss the mating season or hit the mating season?
To miss. It would be, your intent is to miss, right? And there are other endangered species that we do not want to interfere, otherwise we'd be kind of in violation of the, the whole reason we're trying to do the work, right?
Okay, well, having fished some of these reefs down in the Gulf before, I can tell you they are beneficial, so I, I, I don't know how this happened, but I'm pleased to vote for it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Please vote. The resolution passes. Ms. Allen, I trust that Mayor Floyd will get to push the button that dumps it into the ocean? Other matters, I know we have three matters from Mr. Andrews that are reported out from executive session. Mr. Andrews.
Yes, sir. We actually have a total of four, as we had to break one of them up. I'll go with the shortest one first, and then do the longer ones later. The first one is, we would need a motion to approve a settlement in the amount of $275,000 in the lawsuit of La Keebler Johnson versus Wayne Eldridge and MARTA.
I'll move approval of the resolution.
Moved by Duratt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Hardage. Being a matter out of executive session, this will be a vote by hand. All in favor of the resolution for the settlement, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Ms. Jones, are you abstaining? Okay. The motion pa, or the resolution passes. Next item, Mr. Andrews.
Sure, the next one is a resolution authorizing the fifth round of acquisition offers and settlements for right-of-way and easements in support of the Summerhill Bus Rapid Transit Project, City of Atlanta, Fulton County, Georgia. Whereas pursuant to the MARTA Act of 1965 as amended, MARTA exists for purposes of planning, designing, leasing, as we see, purchasing, acquiring, holding, owning, constructing, improving, equipping, financing, maintaining, and administrating a rapid transit system within the metropolitan area, and operating same. And whereas the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority's operations staff has identified a public need to acquire property within the City of Atlanta, Fulton County, Georgia, and the cities within the territorial jurisdiction of MARTA. Whereas MARTA will expand its rapid transit system by developing, maintaining, and operating a bus rapid transit project located within the city, and whereas MARTA Planning and Capital Programs has identified that certain real property located adjacent to the Summerhill BRT corridor, City of Atlanta, Fulton County, State of Georgia, for acquisition to facilitate the Summerhill BRT project. And whereas MARTA and the city executed a rapid transit contract and assistance agreement as amended, and a project-based agreement executed on March 25th, 2022, whereby the parties agree to coordinate their efforts regarding the expansion of MARTA's rapid transit system, including without limitation, the city agreeing to work with MARTA, and upon the request of MARTA to exercise its eminent domain power to acquire any property rights and interests necessary for MARTA to carry out its purposes as stated in the MARTA Act. And whereas upon the city's approval, MARTA will submit offers to the fee owners or owners, excuse me, owner or owners of the properties in the amount of the appraised values. If negotiations of fair and equitable purchase terms are not successful, then MARTA will request the city initiate condemnation proceedings. Be it resolved therefore by the Board of Directors of the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority that in accordance with the policies and procedures previously adopted by the Board, the acquisition of these real properties known as MARTA Parcels B102, 119, 132, 138, 150A, 159, 183, 184, and 189, as identified on Exhibit A attached here too, and incorporated herein by reference, are hereby determined to be necessary for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the authority's bus rapid transit system and hereby is approved. Be it further resolved therefore that the general manager/CEO or his delegate is hereby authorized to offer and execute acquisition agreements and/or other settlements with the fee simple owner or owners of the acquisition of the properties in an event of mutual agreement, or settlement is unsuccessful, to request the City of Atlanta to initiate condemnation proceedings.
The resolution has been read. Is there a motion to approve this?
Second.
Moved by Hardage, seconded by Mr. Pond. Any discussion? Please, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? No opposed, with one abstention. Next item, Mr. Andrews.
Resolution authorizing the first round of acquisition offers and settlements for right-of-way and easements in support of the Cleveland Ave. and Metropolitan Avenue Arterial Rapid Transit Project, City of Atlanta, Fulton County, Georgia. Whereas pursuant to the MARTA Act of 1965 as amended, MARTA exists for purposes of planning, designing, leasing, purchasing, acquiring, holding, owning, constructing, improving, equipping, financing, maintaining, and administrating a rapid transit system within the metropolitan area and operating same. And whereas the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority's operations staff has identified a public need to acquire property within the cities of Atlanta and East Point, Fulton County, Georgia, and cities that are within the territorial jurisdictions of MARTA. MARTA is expanding its rapid transit system by developing, maintaining, and operating a bus arterial rapid transit, arterial rapid transit project located within the cities. Whereas MARTA Planning and Capital Programs has identified the certain real property located adjacent to her within the Cleveland Metropolitan ART Quarter in the City of Atlanta, Fulton County, Georgia, State of Georgia, for acquisition to facilitate the construction and operation of the Cleveland Metropolitan ART Project. And whereas MARTA and the City of Atlanta executed a rapid transit contract and assistance agreement as amended, whereby, whereby the parties agreed to coordinate their efforts regarding the expansion of MARTA's rapid transit system, including without limitation, the City of Atlanta agreeing to work with MARTA, and upon the request of MARTA to exercise its eminent domain power to acquire any property rights and interests necessary for MARTA to carry out its purposes stated in the MARTA Act. And whereas upon the City of Atlanta's approval, MARTA will submit offers to the fee owner or owners of the properties in the amount of the appraised values. If negotiations of fair and equitable purchase terms are not successful, then MARTA will request the City of Atlanta to initiate condemnation proceedings. Be it resolved therefore by the Board of Directors of the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority in accordance with policies and procedures previously adopted by the Board, the acquisition of the real properties known as MARTA's parcels numbers B218, 219, 222, 224, 225, 227, 228, 230, 231, 233, 235, 236, 238, 239, 240, 241, 242, 243, 244, 245, 247, 248, 249, 250, 2501, excuse me, 251, 252, 253, 254, 255, 256, 257, 258, 259, 260, 261, 262, 263, 264, 266, 268, 269, 272, and 273. As more specifically identified on Exhibit A attached here too, incorporated herein by reference, are hereby determined to be necessary for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the authority's bus, arterial bus rapid transit system and hereby is approved. Be it therefore, be it further resolved therefore that the general manager/CEO or his delegate is hereby authorized to offer and execute acquisition agreements and/or other settlements with fee simple owner or owners for the acquisitions of the properties and in the event of mutual agreement or settlement is unsuccessful, successful, to request the City of Atlanta to initiate condemnation proceedings.
Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Moved by Duratt, seconded by Hardage. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, with one abstention? Mr. Andrews, last item.
Resolution authorizing the first round of acquisition offers and settlements for right-of-way and easements in support of the Cleveland Ave. and Metropolitan Ave Arterial Rapid Transit Project, City of East Point, Fulton County, Georgia. Whereas pursuant to the MARTA Act of 1965 as amended, MARTA exists for purposes of planning, designing, leasing, purchasing, acquiring, holding, owning, designing, leasing, purchasing, acquiring, holding, owning, constructing, improving, equipping, financing, maintaining, and administrating a rapid transit system within the metropolitan area and operating same. And whereas the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority's operations staff has identified a public need to acquire property within the cities of Atlanta and East Point, Fulton County, Georgia, and the cities are within the territorial jurisdiction of MARTA. Whereas MARTA is expanding its rapid transit system by developing, maintaining, and operating a bus arterial rapid transit project located within the cities. Whereas MARTA Planning and Capital Program has identified that certain real property located adjacent to or within the Cleveland Metropolitan ART corridor in the City of East Point, Fulton County, Georgia, Fulton County, State of Georgia, for acquisition to facilitate construction and operation of the Cleveland Metropolitan ART project. And whereas MARTA and the City of East Point agreed to coordinate with their efforts regarding the expansion of MARTA's rapid transit system, including without limitation, the City of East Point agreeing to work with MARTA and upon request of MARTA to exercise its eminent domain power to acquire any property rights and interests necessary for MARTA to carry out its purpose as stated in the MARTA Act. Whereas upon the City of East Point's approval, MARTA will submit offers to the fee owner or owners of the properties in the amount of the appraised values. If negotiations for fair and equitable purchase terms are not successful, then MARTA will request the City of East Point to initiate condemnation proceedings. Be it resolved therefore by the Board of Directors of the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority that in accordance with the policies and procedures previously adopted by the Board, the acquisition of those real properties known as MARTA parcel numbers B 203, 205, 206, 207, 209, 210, 211, 212, 213, 214, 215, 216, 270, and 271, as more specifically identified on Exhibit A attached here too and incorporated, but incorporated herein by the reference, by their reference, are hereby determined to be necessary for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the authority's bus rapid transit system and hereby is approved. Be it further resolved therefore that the general manager/CEO is, or his delegate is hereby authorized to offer and execute acquisition agreements and/or other settlements with the fee simple owner or owners for the acquisitions of the properties and in the event of mutual agreement or settlement is unsuccessful, to request the City of East Point to initiate condemnation proceedings.
Mr. Durritt moves. Mr. Pahn seconds. All in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Hardage? Any opposed? All in favor with one abstention. Is there any other discussion among Board members? Any other matters before, to come before the Board? If not, this meeting stands adjourned.